I'm just making sure it works. I want to be mindful that everyone's time, so we are going to start right on the dot. So if you would please, today, I would like to first open up in prayer, and since today is 9/11, I'm going to ask a couple of things. Pretty much, I'm pretty sure everyone here knows something that happened that day that personally affected you. But those who lost their lives, so before we begin, I would ask for 30 seconds, just for a moment of silence, for those who lost their lives on this day. Dear heavenly fathers, we gather here today that we remember those who served our country in fathers' loss of lives that we never forget. Father, as we go into this process, that you give us wisdom, strength, that we open our ears, and that we collaborate for the best of our future for our city. In your name you pray, amen. And if you would please, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to ask, Bev, will you please lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and treasured flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. God bless Texas!
We do have, I am looking for, we don't have various votes still. So Bev, if you would please, quickly, I'm going to square you in. And we're going to just do it right here, and it's going to be a simple one. You sort of uphold the bylaws and to do your best towards the charter committee. Alright, congratulations. Bev, I have allowed everyone else, and just for a quick second, I'm going to pass this to you. Will you please tell a little bit about yourself, just so people know?
Hi, I'm Bev Stevens, and I live in the Quail Creek subdivision of the 1139. I have lived in McLendongism for 42 years. I served on city council for 22 of those years, and then about a year on P&amp;Z, and I think this is my 12th or 13th year on Board of Adjustments. I am the current chair, so when I moved here, there were 324 people. Wasn't a whole lot going on, so I have seen some drastic change. So, just happy to be here to help form our next step as a city.
Alright, thank you, Bev, so glad. I have served on other committees, and I can tell you that she's going to be a great asset. She was so good that Tony went out the door. So with that, as we begin this next process, you do see the template, we did kind of send out online to allow you guys to review. Again, this isn't a final resolution, so any verbiage or anything that you have concerns at any point during this meeting tonight, or either by email, or however that you realize it, it's fine. We want to address those issues. So I just want to make sure that you have those opportunities of where we're at. So we're going to have three topics, but I'm going to talk about what we're going to be thinking about today. We're going to be talking about the former government, annexation and de-annexation language, and then also senate administration positions. So make sure that those are the things that we are going to be discussing tonight, and then later tonight, we will be discussing our next meeting and what we're going to be addressing then. But today, I would like to introduce, as we go to number four, discussion with the city attorney regarding any various chapter provisions. So with that, please welcome city attorney Michael Halla.
Maybe I should show up to a council meeting in jeans, a regular shirt more often. So I know that this is, I think, the second meeting that y'all have had, or maybe the third. So I'm here, council member Brewer calls it involuntary, voluntary action by me to be here. So, which is, I actually think a lot of him, so I didn't have any problem when he mentioned that y'all may benefit from anything I can offer. I've worked with a lot of consultants when they use, which I always think is a good idea. I'm a consultant-type person, transferring from general law to home rule. So, most of the cities that I represent are general law, and I've got a few cities going through the home rule process, so this is not foreign or anything like that. So I'm just here to the best I can to answer any question that you have, and you know, to the best, and also give an opinion. I think a lot of times, quite frankly, professionals, they don't offer an opinion on things, but a lot of times, that's what you want them to do, is offer, pay them for their opinion. It's not a guarantee or anything like that, but it's, hey, these given sets of circumstances, with these facts, what do you think would probably happen? So, I'm more than, I think I'm one of the few people who actually will do that. But I've represented the city off and on since maybe 2007, I think it was. Bev could probably tell you then, because she was on council then. So somewhere around 2007, and then I left the firm, and then I've come back in 18, or 17, or 18, something like that. So, I've been around McLendongism for a while, I know a lot of the people, and the topography in the area and stuff like that. So whatever I can do to help you all, kind of make recommendations of those I'm more willing to do.
Right, any questions at this time? Anyone want to start with a deep question? He's here, and as we go through, we can have him. Are there any pressing concerns, things that you want to talk about, or that might be coming up in the future that you want us or him to look into, that you have this opportunity? I want you not to be shy, I want you to be able to ask any question you have, Mr. Halla.
Just know that if you ask me for my opinion, I will give it, so.
Okay, so if there is, she has questions? Alright, the good news is, I'm not going to rush this process. So if she makes it here, Mr. Halla, he's giving, he'll be here the whole time, but we're here. So, we're going to make sure we have that. Mr. London?
So I submitted the information about the PID prohibition. Did you get a chance to look at that?
I did, I did. So here's my opinion on that. I, and everybody's heard me say it, and now we're being recorded, but I told you, if you ask for my opinion, I'm going to give it. So I think y'all have heard me, my one rule about developers, if they're talking, they're lying. And so, by way of analogy, developers are the devil, and muds are their pitchfork. So here is, I actually, I make sure I said that, so I don't floor anybody with my statement. I'm actually not against PIDs, okay? And let me tell you why. PIDs only affect the property that's in that defined meets and bounds geographical area. And for several years now, that when the legislature, they passed a law, you've got to notify homeowners that they're part of a PID, and that are assessments, part of, there's a closing disclosure statement for PIDs now, and if, obviously if you're in one, for real estate transactions. It's a part of the Trek deal and the whole nine yards. So nobody can say, I guess they can say it, but they'll just look ignorant if they do. Oh, that Ohio was part of a PID. So they're going to, and it only affects those people in the PID, and it allows, it allows infrastructure to be built, roads and streets, not at the city's cost, okay? Because it doesn't, the PIDs, the bonds, don't affect our bond rating, okay? Now here, this is why I professed it with the first sentence. The only real tools that developers have inside or outside the city are muds and PIDs. So guess what happens if you really restrict PIDs? Bingo, bingo. So my thing is, look, we're in ETJ, you know, they're like, basically there, you're going to, you want to be slapped on the right side of the face or left side of the face? That's pretty much our regulation in the ETJ. I would rather bend over backwards to encourage PIDs, so we can keep out the muds. I don't want us to look personally, okay, I guess, I didn't say I'd give my opinion, but I'd always look like Houston, okay? And if you have, if you're going to have one of those too, without a doubt, I think PIDs are razzier. The developer has to come in, they have to put in, I think, up to 10%, or at least 10%. So they've got to have some skin in the game in the beginning. And it's not, it's not going to affect the other people in the city, it is just for that area. So we don't, we accept it on our terms. If it's in the, if it's in the ETJ, we're new to PIT, they still got to make it. That gives us now, gives us control that we didn't have before. So the way I like to do it is, to a certain extent, you got to work with the devil to get something. And what I mean by that is, if we have zero control in the ETJ, but we can do a PID, or a development agreement, or something, this can give us, I don't know, 18% control? I went to law school, because I don't do math, I'm not good at it, and I don't like it. But to me, 18% is a whole lot more than 0%. So, that's how I look at it. Now, one thing, and I don't know that we've probably updated them, and I do agree that every city should have a PID policy. Hey, these are the PID policies, so you know, if you want to come to our city, and you want a PID, or ETJ, or city limits, this is our policy, and we can't really deviate from the policy. So I absolutely think we need that, so we're going to give us some protection. This is not going to be these wide-open PIDs that, you know, whatever, and have no restrictions. One of the things, for example, would be, our building codes apply, whether we've got the IMPC, the IBC, the IPC, the IFC, the NEC, all these other cities, you know, whether it's 2015, 2018, 2021, whatever. You've got to go by that.
As far as the PID.
And, we get some money for those PIDs. So the city is reimbursed also too, from those PIDs. And the only thing that's reimbursed, and it's laid out on statute 372, authorized improvements that you can use for the PIT. So it's not like they're going to be furnished with their own townhouse, or their own guesthouse, or whatever, and that's going to be paid for. No, no, it's streets, roads, landscaping, streetlights, if you got them, things like that, and they're going to benefit the public in that area. So, and that's less cost to us. So that's kind of my thinking on the PIDs, and I would want the, and one thing, council member Brewer has informed me about a lot of stuff. You've got a great, I don't know if he's the liaison, or whatever, he's like, right on top of stuff. And the one thing I would like, I see it as a segue, the whole purpose of the charter is to kind of set up how the city is going to be run. What you want to avoid, I think, is too much bureaucratic red tape, that it's every little thing, oh, you know what? We can't make a decision on Charmin or Angel Saw, we've got to go to a referendum and have the people vote on that. I mean, you don't want to handcuff future city councils so much that they have no discretion to do anything. Otherwise, why do you, why do you have? I mean, the charter should be laid out, and the two things, really the three things that we have to look at for charter, and it is way different, it's a little bit easier than general law is, you look at the Texas constitution, any statutes, see if we contradict those, and then our home rule charter. If our home rule charter allows us to do it, we're good to go. I mean, for example, our home rule charter, and this is just an easy example, hey, we're going to create a police department. I don't know, well, we're going to have 36.4 police officers, they can't carry handguns that are more than a Glock 45, we can only have cars that are Ford's, that is just way too much detail. What if Chevy's a better deal for us? What if we can get 14 Tahos, because somebody's getting rid of their police department, and they got to sell them on the cheap? Well, no, it's not in our charter, we're going to have to go to the people that are going to vote for that. Okay, no, they've already sold them. So, that's one thing, just how this ties into the PIT is, we definitely want a PID policy, and we probably need to look at, and maybe that's something we need to write down for Conrad, is looking at updating, seeing when the last time we updated our PID policy. Because we do those every once in a while, and I'm just telling you, if it keeps out the muds, it's a good thing, because those are.
Well, the muds are an issue that you take up with the state, so that's got to be done down in Austin at the legislature. I was just, yeah, well, then TCQ, but the main thing is, you know, what can we do to provide a little bit of control and slow, so it's an actual, you know, because growth is going to happen, we know that. Right, it's inevitable. But controlled growth, you know, is where a lot of cities struggle, and we've seen it all over the place. I mean, you can take a look at Fayette as an example, you can even look at Rockwall as an example. You know, people that have been here long enough, that'll tell you about Mesquite and Fornie and everything else, will say, oh, it was great, it was big country town, then all of a sudden, you know, the urbanization crawled in, and it was just the developers buying farmland, and then they had free rein to do whatever they want. And then, I mean, because I know the PIDs were changed in the 80s, so that's when that capability came into play. So then, they started, they stopped utilizing their investors as much, and they just went to doing PIDs. So that way, the developers didn't have to pay for it upfront, they didn't have to get their financing, they didn't have to do any. So now they just go, oh, we finance it on the people, and then the people just pay for it. And so, you know, listening to the people that came and talking about the PID administration, to me, it sounded like, well, that's a pretty good racket if you can run it, because they get paid on, you know, the overall PID, then they get paid on a per-phase basis. So however many phases that they're going to put into place, they're like, huh, yeah, we're going to make seven grand off of these people every single month, for doing what, for handling the books? You know, and I'm just like, okay, this, this to me, and oh, well, there's, you know, oh, there's nothing on the city. And they kept saying that, well, there's nothing on the city, city doesn't have to do anything. And I kept hearing that and thinking to myself, you know, you're taking advantage of small towns, and.
See, those are great points, and here's where the difficulty with that comes in. What I think we should put in the charter that we're talking through it is, the shit city shall have a PID policy, and that PID policy shall be revisited, reviewed, what are you going to say, every two years? That you, like, for example, Texas, they have to be updated every two years, every two years by the city. Because, and the reason those are good points is, that it also ties into what I was saying earlier. It's the right there, it's a decision of what kind of PIT administrator, for example, you're going to get. Now, but what are you going to do? Are you going to put in the charter that, hey, here's a list, who are the only PIT administrators you can use? Well, what if we list four, and three of them are defunct? If I'm that first one on the list, and I know the other three after six years are defunct, I'm going to charge as much I can possibly charge, because now the city's charter says they can only use these four, and these other three are gone. So, while I agree that those are very, very important decisions, those are decisions that future councils should be free to make on their own, and the citizens need to come and say, wait a minute, hold on, we've got a PID policy, let's make sure we look, and I think some of that stuff like PIT administrator, I think you can add some of that to the PID policy. I think that's a really strong argument, for having a PID policy, and for making sure it's reviewed and/or updated if need be, every couple of years. Because I don't think cities do that enough, and they, excuse me, the analogy, they get caught in the pants now. Then, once someone slips in, you're like, oh, okay, crap, we need to do that. Well, let's be proactive, we've got our charter, we need to look at this every two years, we got it, let's make sure it's even better.
So with that, following to that point, are you making a recommendation, because we talk about this with any policy, because we talk about the comprehensive plan, we've talked about other policies. Should it be written in that all policies shall be reviewed within a set number of years, three years, and basically say that any city policy shall be reviewed? shall be reviewed?
No, because, yeah, I don't think any policy, I think you stick it here, here's why. Because then you're talking about, well, we got a policy of, of, uh, I like the tissue paper, and we got a policy of using the cheapest tissue paper that we can, that we can get, because that's good for the public. Well, we really need to re- revisit that policy, and, and we've got a few policies that are pretty, you know, detailed, or some very basic things, and do you really want those things reissued, or excuse me, reviewed every couple of years, mandated by the charter? I'm not saying should or shouldn't be, but I'm saying having them mandated by the charter probably may be a little too meticulous and static and detailed.
That's why I'm asking, because the concern that I have, and the reason why I'm bringing that up, is if we have our, our comprehensive plan, and you're allowing single-family zoning and the zoning to be less stricter, but you're going to be in PID, could there be a potential that we're being overly, in, in other words, we're being malicious towards a certain development to a point where you're, you're stricter on that than your zoning itself?
Oh, sure.
And that's my concern.
I would ask, as far as zoning is concerned, I would absolutely not restrict the council, because you want them, because what you've done, if you put something in your charter, now you're limiting the council's ability to make a decision, and they can use other reasons. It is very, here's the particular thing, I really like the question. Normally, what I want in the minutes, and this is what I recommend, is less is more. There, zoning is something different. It's the, it's, it's a federal to that concept, because in zoning, I want the council to put in, hey, it wasn't continuous with the surrounding areas, it doesn't benefit the community as a whole, there are these issues, there are these problems, I wanna pepper the record if one did claim it is unconstitutional. It also protects us. If we come back, I don't know, eight months later, and we deny zoning, and someone else wants to zoning, and they say, and we say, yes, for whatever reason, says yes to this one, we can go ahead and say, oh, you're discriminating, no, look at the record, here's all the things that we said, it is not an apples to apples comparison, you are oranges, the previous one was apples to apples. So that's a really good question.
And that's why I wanted to bring that up, and, and I just wanna make sure we protect the city.
Sure.
And again, I like that, but I wanna make sure that we're not doing something that binds future councils, but that we are transparent about what we do. And I think that we have to be fair, and I think that any question you bring up, I just wanna make sure that when we ask you what we did. And I, and I really appreciate Dennis's question.
I love the idea that somebody's policy, like a PID policy, I like trying to get the, tax evasion, if we ever, we don't need it now, because we don't really have it, but you know what, we might in the future, I, it's already, for our state law, for example, that you have to have those uh updated every two years if you're gonna issue a tax evasion. Um so, but it doesn't hurt having it in the charter. I'm just saying, some things for our, our policies are important enough that I would want a mandatory review on them every couple of years, uh and say, hey, look, you know what, this is still good for the city. We've changed, we've grown, we've gotten smaller, we've done this, things have changed over here every couple of years, looking at that, I don't think it's a bad deal at all.
Um, Roberta.
I'm sorry, Heather.
Are you, no, no problem, we're glad you're here, and it, and it doesn't matter, we're, we're glad you're here. Um, what I'm going to do is, go ahead and ask your questions. I messed up a way, Mr. Darius Boe, is that correct? I'm going to score you in privately real quick and get you sworn so you can ask questions. So while we proceed, I don't want to delay the process. So if you're gonna come with me real quick, I'm gonna step away. Vice Chairman, will you please leave while I step out?
Are we still on questions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, James, do you have a question?
Can I ask, I'm a little late, I apologize, I'm late.
It's all right.
And I couldn't answer, I have a question.
They actually said it was okay, because you probably wouldn't have.
So I was just wondering, I have written down here this question. Can the con, can the charter, the home rule charter decide, can we write down in our home rule what size a lot, since we're talking about zoning, what's minimum size a lot can be?
That, that is, I would say that would probably be a, two things. One, I kind of already addressed that, I don't think zoning comp plan should be addressed in the charter. That, that's too much handcuffing of future city councils, number one. Number two, you've got 211 of the local government code and 213 of the local government code, which already covers zoning and already cover comprehensive plans. Now, here's what you can do in the charter, you look at 213, and y'all might be very interested in this, I think you'll probably take some thinking. 213.003 of the local government code is for how you amend your comp plan. And there's a default, an A, and then the B, I'll get to. A basically says, look, have a public hearing and pass an ordinance, you got a comp plan, that's really the default. D says, or as a city in its by ordinance as our charter may lay out. So you may wanna consider, I know the comp plan, um, well, I guess, I can't remember, I can't remember if the comp plan's been on topic in the city or not. Nudge, nudge, ha ha. So that may be, and that may take some discussion and some voting and some batting around, but that's certainly something that y'all may be interested in doing, is, hey, what is the process we're gonna have when you wanna amend the comprehensive plan?
In this regard, I only have one more follow-up question.
Sure.
If we were to say, we were gonna say, a lot had to be 1.5 acres, let's say, and then a investor comes in and buys land to build a lot of lots, does the piece of land he buys, it will be over 1.5? Let's say we set 1.5 acre minimum, and he buys 20 or so, or 50, but he's planning to make a bunch of, let's say, 6,000 square foot acres. Would the lot he buy, would he qualify, because the lot, the land he buys originally is 1.5 acres, though he's gonna divide it a hundred times?
See, here's the problem you have with that. If you lay that out on a charter, it takes a vote of all the people to change it, okay? And what if, over time, your zoning ordinance conflicts with your charter? Then you really got a problem, you're running, every time we wanna make a zoning change, you gotta run, and you know, can't do that, we gotta wait, and that may end up hurting us, there could be situations that could hurt us in the long run. So, so my position is, that's a little, we talked about being, so what I said earlier is, you don't wanna hamstring future city councils and handcuff them, and you also don't wanna be too detailed. Like, you're, you're so detailed, you make it impossible for anybody in the future to do anything. That, that, that's the concern. So I wanna stay away from the zoning, but, I mean, I'm glad you brought that up, because it reminded me of 213.003, and I wouldn't consider, hey, you know what, and y'all don't have to, y'all don't have to. But it's certainly something, I think, worthy of y'all's discussion if you want to, to say, hey, look, this is the way we, I think, the process we should have to amend our comprehensive plan.
So my question kinda fell in the same vein, but more in line with the muds, so I think you've more or less answered that question, is that there's no real way for us to prevent it outright through the charter of, of that sort of thing.
Oh, no, no, well, James, now you, okay, James got me worked up, okay, all right. So, like, let me say what muds are, okay? And it's not defamation, because I'm not naming anybody specifically. But developer, and I, to a certain extent, I'll say this, I think cities have hurt themselves by being too, not this city, no, trust me, not this city, but I think cities have hurt themselves in different parts of Texas, because just for the sake of spite, or this or that, or whatever it may, they made it too difficult on developers. So what if, not all developers, I've met some that are morons, okay? And you wouldn't think somebody turning around the mud pitchfork would be a moron, but some of them are. So what's happened is, that they decided, you know what, we're spending millions of dollars anyway, developers across the state, don't think it's not millions of dollars across the state, Mr. James. Uh, I don't know the last name, so it's Mr. James. So millions of dollars across the state is what's being spent with all, with all development. What they decided to do is, you know what, these cities are being reticent, recalcitrant, just hard-nosed for no real reason, and we're spending all this money, and it's costing us time. What did Einstein teach us, time is money? So these developers, the ones that are halfway decent, you know what, we're gonna spend millions of dollars anyway, so what are we gonna do? We're gonna go grease the wheels, we're gonna illegally, criminally, and all kinds, and as I said it, underneath the table, pay off the state legislatures to pass laws the way we want them to be passed. That way, we now bypass the cities. So they're still spending the same amount of money, but it's the time they don't have to worry about. For example, the mud, uh, two legislative sessions ago, I think in mud, we have no control over muds now. We used to be able to hold up the process when it was in our ETJ, we could hold up the mud process, six, eight months maybe, and it would delete the like, could this be stopped? Now, they basically just went to cities and state legislature, you guys just put up the mud wherever you want to. That's, that's the way it works. So now, we've got less control. That's again, to, to, to pump the pit a little bit, at least with the pit, you've got that and you say, hey, look, we'll do it, if whatever you're gonna build, you build it up to our standards, not to the standards that you want.
Well, due to that legislation that went through, for, they, they have, TCQ requires 90 days for the city to respond, if there's no response, it's an acceptance. Right, so that's basically, it's like, you can't hold it up anymore, and they run away with it.
Right.
Is there something that we could do, because I, I've been talking to some of my neighbors and, and people that are in the area, and one thing that they've asked about with muds, because they heard me during my campaign when I talked about, you know, what muds are doing, is, would we be able to, um, if it borders our city lines where the mud is established, obviously, we could do it if it was within the, the city.
Right.
But if a mud gets established before they go up to do any of their, they're voting for the board, voting for everybody else, um, establishing the bonds, we could require that any, any votes also includes McClendon Chisholm residents that border there within, say, 200 yards, or whatever the case is. Can we do that, or is that something that, because the legislature hasn't?
Yeah, I think that's been.
I, I figured, but I was thinking, if it was just on the city side, if we could do that.
You know what you should do is, now, both, this is not unusual, like, like, people make a, a, a big deal about, um, you know, oh, all these mud voters are one to none, one to none, because somebody just goes and chants out, you know, that's all over the state. There's all kinds of muds being created by a vote of one to none. You know, what really should happen is, you go buy out some of that property, write smack dab in the middle of it, now you gotta, uh, you know, a, a one-one vote, they don't have 50%, it doesn't pass. That's how, that's how, maybe we can take care of the muds. So, but yeah, that's also, it's kind of like the lesser of two evils. Oh, okay, well, you know, here, here's Jaws over here, or I get stomped on by Godzilla, which one do you want? That's kinda with, with PIDs and muds. Well, here's the thing, that's why I'm gonna jump in with the great white, lots of people have survived chart attacks. I've never seen one Godzilla movie where he stepped on somebody and they've lived. Godzilla being the mud, Jaws being the pit, there's at least a chance to survive with, if we've got, uh, or if we've been inundated with PIDs versus if we're inundated with mud. I, I mean, I don't know why anybody would wanna live around Houston, I know we've got all the Houston jokes, and we can do that, but specifically with the muds and stuff like that. So that's, I mean, that's a good question, but that's kinda how I see the, the muds.
Okay, so while we're on the subject of that, my favorite word, which is mud, and we now have one within the confines of McClendon Chisholm, is it possible to put anything in the charter that would stop the residents of that mud of getting elected? I know we can't stop them from getting elected to city council, but action they may take to turn that mud over to the city, and that debt over to the city. Is there anything?
No, I mean, that's a good question, but they're gonna, anything that they do, they're gonna have legislative immunity. They do it up there, while they're, while they're acting as council members, and that's pretty much absolute.
I mean, it would be stupid for them to do it as elected officials, because they're burdening everybody when they're alleviating their self.
You're right, because no one has ever done anything stupid as a legislative official.
You do?
I take that back, I did.
All right, so one thing I do wanna bring up, and, and when people bring up, and you're gonna hear this discussion, when people bring up, why is it important to have a charter? And the difference.
Why what?
Why it's important to have a charter or being a charter city, is ETJ, there is a little bit of more strength, and not as much as it used to be, but there is slightly more strength with extraterritorial jurisdiction, correct? Still a little.
I'd have to look that up, I'm not aware of what, what the charter, what a home rule city would be, I mean.
The ETJ extensions.
You what?
I think it's the extensions of the extraterritorial.
Oh, the size?
Yes.
All right, so that, that's set by statute, 40021 of the local government code, sets the, the issue grow, and you get bigger, your ETJ increases until it abuts.
Right.
Somebody else's.
But a general law does not have that, which now you do. So that is a thing, now, some people might argue that, but I wanna bring up what the difference between the two in that, as we're talking about annexation and the annexation. I do think that is something for you to think about. Um, I'm gonna keep passing it around, and, um, but I don't wanna mess out, Darius, you are now sworn in, do you have any questions at this time? I know you're, you're the new one on the block, but do you have anything at this time?
No.
Okay.
No questions.
All right. All right.
Not till we get into the, uh.
Okay. All right, good.
I just had a general question about, um, the ETJ and having, um, I mean, a lot of people say we have some control, and I heard you say we have zero control in the ETJ as a city.
It depends on how you want it, so we've got subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision ordinance, and that applies in the ETJ?
It may.
Okay. Affecting, when you mentioned also that PIDs don't affect the rest of the city, um, it doesn't affect our traffic and our water and electricity, um, so there is that consideration?
I meant the cost of the.
The cost of them, yeah, all their assessments pay for their repairs and stuff, even though we now own their roads as assets, right?
If they're in the ETJ, we won't, and the only way they're in on the road, and that's a good question, of that, something that's in the ETJ, is if they voluntarily annexed into the city.
Correct.
And we would accept the road, which is typically generally normally in the past, that was how it was normally done. We got 212, like 172, they can do a developer agreement. PID was also a, a, a component of that. And so the way it had been for a number of years, it had been, they created that development, they built it closer to what the city would require, it's on the city limits, they're outside, so they got a little bit more freedom, we agreed to it, because it's better to have that control. And then, at some point, it was like, well, look, we're, we're, we're still being restricted, because eventually you're gonna come into the city, when you build out phases or each phase, let's say you got three phases, one will come in, and two will come in, and three, but we're not gonna accept this, because you, you apply pretty much at the same meeting, you do the annexation, you apply the zoning, then you do the plat, all that's accepted at one meeting, and we're accepting being responsible for those streets, not the local infrastructure. So we made sure that when it was being built, in our ETJ, according to our specifications. So, yeah, it, it, that would apply, we were reading it now, a lot of times, like I said earlier, my developers were just standing out in the ETJ.
Well, yeah, I, I know, so in my very day, we acquire, absorb their loads, right?
Right.
So, yeah, but there's some sort of phases, so we do it by phase.
That, a lot, a lot of development agreements, I had to look at that agreement specifically, but, yeah, a lot of them are done in phases.
And, uh, you said that cities have, what, 90 days for muds to reply?
I think that's what Mr. Darius Boe said, yeah.
Um, I had heard recently there's nine or 10 muds in the county, and that there was no notification given to cities of them coming in.
And that's a legislative issue?
Yeah, I, I would know if they, I'd be able to.
Because I wonder how we get noticed, if they are not required to tell us.
You typically generally normally have that notice given in the paper.
Okay, oh, in the paper, that everyone reads. Okay.
It's a name that we can still have in change.
I know, what paper, which paper would that be? The Ribbon, the Herald? Okay, um, I think that's a question for now.
I have a follow-up.
Oh, yeah.
Very sorry, very sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm not, good.
I just wanted a quick follow-up, um, may I call you Bev? Uh, Bev was questioning, you said something that made my ears perk up, where you said that a mud, which is a political entity, right, they, how would they transfer their debt, the people that live under that mud, how would they transfer their debt to the whole city? Is that what I heard you say?
That's what I'm, I'm sure it's stopped from happening.
How could they possibly do that?
Accept it, they could accept it.
To council action, they could make a motion to accept it, and if the majority of council
accepts it, that millions of dollars to get just went from a mud to the city, which means we can get all of it.
And so, would you say that we can't put anything in our charter that says, you can't transfer, that a mud cannot be transferred to the city?
Well, first off.
Because that's an open door for a little.
First off, it's nice that she lets you call her Bev, I saw her call her instead of Bev.
Well, I'm a popular guy.
There you go, fair enough. And, yes, I think that would be a problem, because you can't put in the charter something that that legislative body has a right to do. For example, one of the questions I would also ask, and I don't know if you have any certificates of obligation, that's a valid debt instrument. A political subdivision has the right to avail itself of, so I believe and others do too, that it would be an illegal, unconstitutional provision of a charter to say, hey, nobody is allowed to use certificates of obligation. If that answers your question.
I didn't like this answer, you probably won't probably agree with us.
Well, we're over in Sonoma Verde, we have a pit, but I would think it would be reprehensible for our pit, put it that way, our pit to, because we have council members here that are members, that live in Sonoma Verde, that they could transfer that debt to everybody.
Oh, they can't. No, that's different, that's a completely different question. You cannot, the pit.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying that would be reprehensible. I know you can't do that with a pit, you can do it with a mud.
Well, what you can do with a mud is, let's say it's created in the ETJ, and whatever debt has come up, then you can say, if they want to say, hey, we want to annex in, and if they get annexed in, then that debt is subdued by, and taken upon by the city. Yes, okay, now that, that's, yes, you can do that.
That would be reprehensible.
I think it would be idiotic, if that's just my. And I'm just telling you.
It would be a legal suicide if you were to.
Well, forget even that, if that happened in this city, is because the week prior, y'all went to Michael Alice, you know.
Can we, along those same lines, you can't.
I thought you said you didn't have it.
No. Same question.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I understand we can't restrict what council can do, but could we do something that makes taking on that sort of debt obligation by the city require a vote of the citizens, not just, not just put the power in council to make that decision, so that one or two people can't do that?
You could probably do that, yeah.
I mean, because I would think that our, well, I hope our full population wouldn't vote for that, but then at least, if the population voted for it and said yes, then maybe it's more.
Because that would be a precursor.
So, so that incursion, so this brings up a point that Mr. Hala wanted to bring up, and I have to play bring this up.
And what the bond is said is, oh, you know, it's a debt task, basically.
So, the question is, is on any bond expenditure, any bond approval that didn't get approved by supermajority, could we put in that, anything that does not get approved with bond expenditures for city money, bond expenditures, must be through by supermajority, and if not, must go to the vote of the people?
I don't think you, no. And, for example, it's like, for example, certificates of obligation, that's kind of fits in, you've got your GOs, your general obligation bonds, you've got your revenue bonds, and your certificates of obligation, your COs. That's a valid debt instrument by the Texas Constitution, specifically given to cities, and I remember, I would have a really difficult time putting any restrictions on how that could be, I think ultimately.
I just want to bring it up, because some people are clear, because that question, everybody get clear and identified right now. All right, so this one is, since we're not gonna be able to do the next one, consent agenda items. I think on second reading, we currently don't have that, but I would like to see if we could put in that all items require a second reading and approval. So.
Sorry about ordinances.
Ordances, yes. Ordances would require a second reading.
I mean, y'all could do that, so let me just leave y'all with one.
Don't leave me.
No, I mean, not like, if we left tonight. This is what, and I truly believe, twenty-five customers are doing this, and representing cities as small as four hundred and fifty, up to seventy thousand people, I truly believe in this one rule. Just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should do something. And here's why, are there some ordinances that I believe are important enough that should require a reading in the second reading? Absolutely. But what you don't want is, okay, look, we've got eighty-six ordinances that require a first and a second reading, and this is the deadline, so we have to put them all on the agenda. I'm just letting you know, I'm gonna sit here, I'm gonna be sick for that meeting. That, you don't want to make it so repulsive, you know, to have meetings. But I do think, now that we're getting to the, and I don't mean this to be sexist, but that's how I grew up, big boy city, maybe there would, maybe that is, would be valid, to have certain ordinances that need to require a reading, and then have a second reading. That is absolutely not a bad idea. I wouldn't disagree for any of this.
How do you determine which one's good?
Okay.
Now, y'all get the big bucks.
All right.
I would say, hey, your company tax, the one that's before, not the one last night, the budget to propose tax, the, but like, your next one, maybe a reward or reading or two. I mean, there's.
On budget.
Yeah, or on budget too, yeah. Those would be, those would be the kind of significant ordinances that would be opposed to have a first or second.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good point.
A first or second reading.
You would use a math. All right.
And you want to be also cautious too. For example, if you do have a process where you amend like your comprehensive plan, do you really want to read all one hundred and seventeen pages of your comp plan? Maybe you have been there, whatever we're amending of the comp plan, that is what we're having a first or second read. But again, that would be another one, that I think would be, those are your big boy, your big person, there you go, your big person ordinances that you may even consider having readings for. So that's a really good question.
So you've represented at least nine municipalities I'm aware of, right? Correct?
Eleven.
Eleven. See, I paid attention.
You did.
All right. So, in that, and with charters, what is a common legal mistake that charters make as a board that we should look out for as we move forward?
I think not legal mistake, just common.
Yeah, I think that would be correct.
Both, that, those are both good questions, the first and the second, but they're kind of the same, and it's still trying to put too much in there. And, like, I don't mind, I don't even mind a charter review every two or three years, I think that's not like a bad.
Raceable.
But they put too much, and like, ooh, wait a minute, we came down too much, we're really, really restricted, it is so difficult to get anything done, blah, blah, blah. I think it's better to lay the basic groundwork, and then you go later on, I'm gonna second that to a year, and you go, oh, you know what, we need to have this in there, we need to change this. Because it is, it is so common in cities to have something, and then something happens, and that's what it is, so we look, we need to change it. And I would try to over-regulate, you know.
Yeah, over-reverse.
But here to me, there's easier to fix that.
Yeah, after you.
That's a great point.
After you have.
It's a great point, it's easier to go back and say, oh, I wish we could fix that versus, oh crap, the way that we did it. You, I got, I'm just listening to y'all's questions, I'm not really concerned that you're gonna put anything in there, like, oh, we shouldn't have put in there, but maybe you put too much regarding that subject.
And I think that's where the language, and I think what we want to be is clear and concise, but simple. And, and I think that's, and I think what we don't want is, we don't want too much legalese that we confuse and leave open holes. But what we want is to be clear, concise, what we want to achieve, why it is, and that the common person or anyone that's picking up this document, any council member, understands clearly what we want to achieve, right? And it's not given to vagueness because of what a word means, and we get lost. With that being said, I think that we are at a point now, does anyone want to revisit anything before we move forward? Because I'm going to go ahead to do our next question, and I think there's a presentation I think we can have with Mr. Hala, is specifically, let's go into form of government. Do we want, how do we want the form of government to be structured? And did everyone receive the email, I believe Mr. Brewer did send out, the differences? So I think this is an easy, small start, but very important. As we begin this next process, our first important decision will be which form of government do we want? We did a template in a boil plate. Mr. Hala, so far, what you saw of our document, we've been pretty good on boil plate so far, moving pretty good? And you're.
Yeah, I actually haven't listened to you talk, I mean.
All right, would you like to review that as we sit here?
Well, I'd love to, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. So we'll have him do that while he's here. So with this, is that, is that coffee, indication you want to start first, Bev? All right. Or am I supposed to call you Ms. Stippens? I don't know which side I'm on, I'm supposed to talk.
I'm happy to.
Um, I mean, as we begin, is there a recommendation from council at this point, legal council, not city council, legal council?
I really don't. I've seen cities, they work in all kinds of different ways, they'll do a hybrid, you know, for example, I've even seen some cities where they've got, say, everybody answers to the city, the city manager, it's chapter twenty-five, we double check on the, officially, the city manager. Everybody answers to the city manager, except for the city attorney and the municipal court judge. So I've seen where everybody, including those two, answered to the, to the city manager, and then who answers to the council. So I've seen it a lot of different places.
So, I guess it brings up one more point, I guess, because you brought it up. I do have, and that was gonna be an easy win possibly tonight, is as we talk administration, we could include municipal court with the administration. Do you have any input, like, I was using basically the basic language, but there are cities in our charter that use court records versus not court record.
Right.
And the issue with that is, a court record requires an attorney, and is a bigger process. At this time, do you have a recommendation with that at all?
You know, I really don't, because courts of record, of course not of record, in chapter twenty-nine and chapter thirty of the government code. And you kind of hit on, in the court not of record, really, one other big difference is, when somebody appeals a traffic ticket or whatever, for example, and then they go up to the county court, it's the notebook, and that's fancy Latin term of of duty. So it's a completely trial, there's no record. If you are a court of record, if they hit it down, there's been a court reporter, and all you do is look at the record on the appeal. So, some cities are court of record, and some cities don't. I have to say, oh, probably sixty-fourty are not courts of record of the cities I represent. I might say a little over half, sixty, roughly sixty percent. So it's, you've got to set it by ordinance, or by charter, if you want to be a court of record. And you're right, another thing to technically, or why it would cost you a little bit more for a court of record, because courts of record do have to have a specialized attorney to be municipal court judge. So that's consideration.
And I just want to remember, we're at five thousand, I do think there could be an issue down the road, but at this time, but again, I'll allow you guys, I just wanted to bring that up, because that was something I was just thinking of.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, no one has anything else to add, anyways, we enter in our first subject here, as form of government. I want everyone to allow, and again, I'm gonna set one ground rule as we, as we begin this part. I want you to be able to fight and stand your ground. The only rule that I'd say is not personal. If you're gonna address it, it is not an individual, only the issue. I will ask you to step out if you get to a point where fighting with other individuals, fighting. If you want to fight vociferously about the issue, you can be as animated as you want. But you make it personal, I'm gonna rule you out of war. All right? So as long as, Bev, you planning on getting personal with someone?
Yeah, I think.
Now I want to know, should I call you Bev or Ms. Stippens?
I've never had anybody like this before.
Well, I, I'm gonna tell you, that's the way we're gonna do it, because I want us to have our say, and I want us to go through, and I am not gonna limit it. I want you to have feel that you were comfortable in this room, and this is me. I want you to feel that way. No one shall ever walk out these doors not feeling that they were afraid to say anything. Period. That will not happen here. Period. So with that, Bev, do you want to go ahead and lead on on it? Because I know you're, this is one of your topics that you feel, think about.
Yeah, this has been a really tough one for me, because I have bounced back and forth as to which one I thought was best for our city. And after reading the document with the differences between the two, after going through all of the different charters that were shared with us, and what they have, and remembering back in my nonprofit history when the city of Dallas tried to go strong mayor, and it was voted down quite rapidly, it's like, if the city of Dallas cannot handle a strong mayor type of city, what would make us think that we could? Because I, that's where I was leaning. I was leaning towards the strong mayor side. But then I also had a few people that I discussed this with, residents, who said, do you realize what you would have to pay a strong mayor if you had that person? To get that person to be the total chief executive officer of this city, we would be looking at, my guess, well over two hundred thousand dollars in a salary. We would still have a city administrator, might not be as well-paid as the one we have currently, because they might not have as many responsibilities under the strong mayor type of government. So my vote at this point, leaving all current staff out of the equation, would be a council manager led government. Just because I think it's what all of our neighbors, not we need to follow what our neighbors have, but it's what the majority, if you read this article, the majority of the state of Texas is under a council manager type of government. So there is a reason that none of these cities are doing a strong mayor type. I feel like you all went off with, when I was talking about the same thing.
So, and I want to add on to that, for the record, the history of this is, if you're wanting to keep a city from not compensating in any other form, if your councils, they're gonna expect to be compensated. So understand that the taxpayer, what that leadership could look like, could be much higher than you anticipate. And I'm not saying with the right leadership and the people having that power, but I have seen it in other cities, where they start to vote on their own budgets, and we've had it in other governments, and it gets out of hand, and then the only way, they might get unelected, but the damage is already done. And, and I just want to be mindful, I'm not saying, but understand that that concept of compensation could be an issue in the future with that design. Yes, there is compensation with the city manager, yes, but also that person serves at the leisure of the council and can be fired at any time, depending on how the contract is construed.
Well, I'm also not saying that council or mayor should not be made some kind of stipend at some point, because I think the days of volunteerism are getting slim with people, and their time is very, very valuable. So I think when we get into more into this, we probably should look at a per-meeting type stipend at some point for our elected officials, but I just think this city cannot afford the strong mayor position.
I was, I was agreeing with her about the same thing, and you add on, when you have the strong mayor, you have one person making a decision, and that leads to the possibility of corruption. When you spread it out over a council manager forum, if the manager's screwing up, enough people come up here and complain about it, the manager gets fired. If you don't, and with the council, you spread everything else out, and if one person is getting grafted under the table, then that can be discovered by the rest of them. If it's the mayor, it's harder and harder to prove.
And I don't need the microphone for this, but I understand that, too, what the government have, whether you like it, and I'm gonna say at this point, is, don't look at what we have today, you have to look at the fairness and the vision of tomorrow. Do not base it on what you have in front of you, because that person may pass away, a change of government can buzz, you have to base it that this is to protect the city, not the individual.
Are we doing, we also gonna talk about districts, whether we.
That will not be today. But if you do have a question for legal council about districts, you may ask.
And it's, it's telling.
Oh, thank you.
Get away.
I would agree, council manager, because I think that council manager form of government gives the citizens the voice and the control within the government that a lot of people think they don't have, but they do, because all they have to do is show up to the council meetings, they can come in and knock on the doors, they can meet with the council, they can take their, you know, redress directly to them, and, hey, you know what, you don't like it, we're gonna replace you. So, you know, and then that will lead later on to initiatives, referendums, and recalls, but that's later on.
That's right. Thank you, sir. Darius, would you like to say anything on this issue? There's, would you like to say anything on this issue?
No.
All right. Roberta?
No, she, she answered it from me.
All right. Thanks.
No, I'm, I'm in the same boat. I think the council manager system is still the best option for us, and having the things in the charter where we're going through a review process, you know, periodically, will give us the option to change if, you know, something changes to make us large enough where we need to go in a different direction, but, you know, like Tony was saying, districts and the other stuff, those things will have to be addressed a little bit differently, but, you know, I don't know, maybe even the idea of potentially adding more council members for supermajority purposes and things like that to, you know, help sway and prevent any of the potential corruption points and things like that. That's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm leaning to also, because you start looking at these other, these other options, whether it's mayor strong or city managers, between tax burden and potential of having a bad hire. We've all seen a bad employee at some point, so.
Uh, I, I don't even think I need this, but it'd be too...
There's more for the people online.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Um, I'm, I'm definitely in agreeing with everybody so far about city council manager. The way I see it, city councils come and go, and if you have a strong mayor and he or she gets replaced, there's a whole, everything's gotta be reworked. If you have a, um, a city manager, a professional, that's their, that is their profession, is managing municipalities, and as long as they're doing a good job, they'll retain their position and you have that continuity of management, so when you have a new council, um, they're still directing the manager, they're still giving him, him or her that input, but the continuity of leadership with all the city employees, um, uh, I don't think you can do better than that. So, I'd be very, very much in favor of city council manager style.
I have pondered this, you know, since the last time we met, going back and forth, trying to weigh the pros and the cons. I do believe that I'm more favorable of the council and the city manager. My, the thing that I just keep coming back to is, I want everyone in the city to feel equal. I want everyone to feel like they have a voice. I want everyone to feel like that, you know, not one person or one group or one part of our city is running everything or getting everything. And I think that is gonna be achieved by the council manager form.
Correct.
Council manager.
Right. What is it for?
Just like the manager.
Yes, I read the document that was sent over, thank you. Um, I read through the sections of all of these different charters, and they all, um, do say Heath Rockwall, Roy City, Sunnyvale Wolf, Fourth. Uh, they say it in different ways, but it's, uh, council manager, and I like, uh, to have the manager answering to all of the council members, so there is more overview and transparency, so I, that is what I am for, and everyone said a lot about it that I agree with, so.
I agree.
All right. You see, we're moving to a point... And I wanna point out, we're moving quite nicely, and I, and this is the first of three that we're discussing tonight and possi- and as we get into administration, and as we talk about the, uh, administration. But I do wanna bring up one more thing, uh, for the council, is, one thing that we should be looking at is recommendation of the power of city council selecting which staffs. So, city manager, is there a recommendation of authority over, uh, the municipal court judge, the city manager, and city secretary? Is there a form of who should have the say in that in administration, or should it just be, because that does change per charter with many, is there a recommendation that you have that is consistent? And city attorney, hiring, firing of...
I mean, that, honestly, those are, that's up to the, to the voters, really, and y'all, I guess, first of all, and then the voters. Um, so, one, one thing that I've seen in all my time is that it's good to have centralized control, um, because if you've got one person that's in charge, but they're not really in charge, sometimes that makes them, it makes it difficult for them to get the job done, and, uh, but you don't wanna group, like, I, I remember several years back, and I've been with the city for seventeen years, it took me forever, they were a small city, they hired a, a police officer. And it's like, well, okay, you realize, like, how much drama you're giving to in a room? And two, that is not really legislated, when you, when you're involved in the day-to-day, every single employee, they're gonna come to you and all that, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the police chief, and three, the police chief, why, why are they gonna care if the chief of police disciplines them? Well, who cares? He can't fire me, only the council can do it. So, there's a lot of considerations in there. You don't wanna have too many positions. Uh, you know, like I said, um, most of the, the places I've seen are the, the city attorney and municipal court judge are kind of the two that are appointed and respond directly to, to council. And, you know, there, there's sort of some, some logic with that, that the municipal court judge, you want them, him or her, to, to have, uh, autonomy to make decisions, to do what they have to do, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, with, with the city attorney, with them to be, you want them to be able to give advice to the council, who really was talking about the people versus serving the city manager, so they can, you know, keep their jobs. So, the, the, that helps a lot.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure, because I do want to know what you can, and to your point, you brought up a great point with the police officer. We don't wanna micromanage.
Right.
But we wanna keep it simple to what their authority is. Because the other thing is, you don't want city staff to feel that they're always gonna lose their job, because that can create other issues as well.
And that's, you know, that's a great point. That's really been the rub, when you've got a city manager visiting control of everybody, it's, so, it does happen worrying in small towns, but you got people running around with the city administrator of the small towns to the council and practically complaining about the city administrator. Well, that's just 'cause it means he can't do the job, the city administrator, the new one that's been there for years, maybe he'll do the job, they'll like it. So, yeah, okay, that's a bad thing. On the other hand, I've been in situations where you've had city administrators who have are so unbelievably dictatorial and authoritarian, these people are literally afraid of losing their jobs if they speak to council. So, there's no way, even in a charter, you can stop people from being lying AOs. You, you just can't do it. To a certain extent, for example, y'all all know this one, how many police officers have you heard, "Why wish we could give a ticket for stupidity"? You can't, okay? You, you just can't stop people from being done. So, what can you do to effect a balance? Where the council's able to speak to maybe department heads, they get a feel for how that city manager is doing their job, and then on the other hand, you go up to the department heads, just write in a complaint to the council, and it turns out really the city manager's just doing their job. So, that, that's kind of a tough. One thing I can do, this may be getting a little bit ahead and apologize, one thing I really prefer and recommend, and I think it really is the quintessential Fifth Amendment due process protection is, the, the, anybody that's terminated by, say, a department head, they have a right to appeal to the city manager. Who was over the department head, who doesn't... Well, what about the department head who's terminated by city manager? So, you can still let the city manager be a group, but they have a right to appeal to the city council. So, now, that's a way, that's, I think a really great way to keep checks and balances. So, if the city manager starts suing people, and you got two of them terminated and they all want appeals, and they're all saying the same thing about, hey, the city manager being dictatorial, you know, the council that's under their head, stuck anywhere but on top of their head, they're going, oh, wait a minute, this, this brings some things to light. So, this, that's another way you can kind of attack that problem, because it is a legitimate concern.
Right. So, with that, anyone else with that? I think we're gonna go to the next part. I'm hearing everyone ready to go for city council, and I don't think we have to miss our vote, because we're making a recommendation, we're gonna go back to it. But is there a recommendation of language? And if not, the one that I like right now is the city of Rockwall's language on the form of government. If there is one that you would like, I will again start down. I'm gonna go, because I wanna make sure we have it. Leslie, I'm starting with you on this end, because you're gonna be leaving at eight. I wanna make sure that you have the verse on this one. So, if there is one that you want, this is the time to consider it, and this is, again, we can change it anytime. This is not firm until later on down the road, but this is just giving us a consistent language, so we're not, know what we're working with. All right? So, there is no wrong answer, but if we all agree in consensus tonight, that's what we're putting in. So, Leslie, I'm gonna start with you. Um, so, it, it would just form of government, and I'm looking at where the city of Rockwall, the language that I have would be, it would be page one of the homeowners charter, section one oh-two, form of government.
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion on this topic between the charters, so I'm, I'm not, I don't feel like I have much to add there.
This was the easiest language.
Uh, so, I haven't drilled down into each and every bit of all of those form of government details, but are we just going to pick a section out of one of these, rather than like a combination or a unique?
If you wanna do that, we can. If you've got a recommendation, we'll do it. If not, I'm trying to find something that works as a base point. If you wanna add to it, we can add to it.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I would prefer to go through each section of, each of the charters that we have available to us and see if there's differing words that we wanna add, rather than just accept one as-is.
And you, you have it? And again, if there's one, I just, I, I, and that's why, I wanna be clear, Melody, the reason why I'm bringing it in sections like this, is so that in advance, you know which ones you can pick out and look at. The idea is, as we get these, that when you come to the next meeting, you kinda know what you're looking for. I'm not expecting it perfectly, and I'm, I'm asking you to do your homework in advance. I'm not trying to put you on spot.
Oh, no, not at all. I mean, I did start going through each one and reading them, and I took some notes on certain things, um...
Is there one that you really like, or not?
No, not particularly, just in whole. I didn't look at it that way as accepting one just as-is. I looked at it as taking what was the best out of what each one had to offer. Um, so, I mean, what I did have written out for form of government was the, the mayor, and some of them had five or six council members, and they were done by place. Uh, most of them were elected at large, uh...
Yeah, and that would be a council discussion. That is not the form of government.
Okay.
Yeah.
Form of government, I just put down what they had put there, and then I was looking through what they had, so, term restrictions, things like that.
Yeah, the, the council in that makeup will be on our next meeting. That will be a big one.
Okay, so, I don't have any particular choice for this.
Okay, very good. I like how it works.
Yeah, I would look at these things, like, if, if we're gonna go through each one of them and try and make a unique one for every single thing we're doing, it's gonna, it would, uh, obviously take quite some time. So, if we, like you said, do our homework, uh, pick out the one we like, and then if we have modifications, we can, we can share those at the same time, but how long has the Rockwall, uh, charter been standing?
Since nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah, so, the, the language, uh, the, just as an example, the language has worked for them since nineteen eighty-five and, and any adjustments they've made. So, I'm more inclined to find stuff like that works, that's longstanding, and, and go with that. Um, but obviously, everybody has their own opinion, so.
Well, and I just wanna add to that, too. That's why I'm saying is, this language, when you wanna pick apart what you want, we'll, we'll, we'll consider it. All we're doing is a base template, so we get a starting point. Um, the fighting over words is not gonna be a today issue. I want you to take the time to figure out what works best for you, and we're gonna do that. But again, this is to move the product forward, because we can tweak this later. All we're trying to get is a good language point, so. Ms. Rapp.
I keep coming back to Heath's, knowing that, you know, like we talked about in previous meetings of the, you know, the committee that formed their charter and the backgrounds and everything, felt like it was, you know, pretty clear, concise, you know, laid out pretty straightforward, you know, rules as far as, you know, how the positions are done per, uh, not necessarily terms, but the odd and evens, or, you know, when the places come up for vote and everything like that. So, that's, that's the one I kinda gravitated to. It just, the, it just read really clean to me, I guess for lack of a better description.
Which one was that?
That's Heath, Heath two oh-one, and but that does include which...
The candidate's individual.
But it extends it, so I wanna make sure that we do that. We're gonna have to revisit. Not a problem, if we accept that language, know that we're gonna fix it again as we talk about the city council. So, I, um, so, just understand that language. All right? You wanna read that one? You wanna read, you want me to read that one out loud?
Which one?
Uh, Heath, so everyone knows, is everyone have that and seen that?
No. This was...
All right.
I, I just wanted to add, I can live with the Rockwall one, but as you can see, the Heath one, I have a lot more highlighting, so, and Heath, I like the election, the chapter, the section on election, I really like that one, but as a template, I can live with the Rockwall one, but maybe we can tweak it a little. Every so often.
Yes, we're, we're, absolutely. That is the intent. The idea is to set this award, and allow you to marinate on it, and that's why I'm trying to do what I'm doing. I'm not trying to, yes.
All right.
All right, so, th- this one I did do some homework on. Uh, I do like, uh, the city of Rockwall and that language. Um, I'm also, I also like parts of, uh, Roy City and Sunnyvale. It's similar, it's similar in language, but, uh, and, and, and maybe I need to think through, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Maybe I need to, to think through a little bit on some of the items that are different, uh, and, and, and make sense of it. But, for example, um, where it says the, in the city of Sunnyvale, where it talks about the, uh, the town manager, uh, reports to the, to the council, again, similar to what we talked about here. Um, Rockwall, uh, similar, similar, and then, of course, uh, Roy City said the same thing, that's the way, city council. So, the only thing I didn't understand was where it was talking about town manager and then city manager. I guess those are interchangeable? Does that, they mean the same thing?
Yes, and I think, I think at this point, um, since we would be in the city of McLennan Chisholm, I think the language would be listed as city.
Yeah, because Sunnyvale is called town.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's why I'm trying it, we are the city of McLennan Chisholm, so the language that you would adopt if that were city, Sunnyvale, I would be changing that la- I would be changing that language, should you say city.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. So, um, so yes, uh, city of, uh, Rockwall, uh, number one, but, uh, the language in the other two, um, I need to think about a little bit.
Mr. Hall?
I liked the, um, well, like I said the first time, I think Heath was written by lawyers for lawyers. Um, but I like the way that they broke things down, they did get granular to it, and then to, you know, Mr. Hollis' point, we don't wanna be so nitpicky on everything and get into the weeds on all of it. Um, but I do like the format of it, I like the flow of it, and I know that we can always amend and make sure that it doesn't go overboard on ours. I also liked Rockwalls, so a combination between the two, I think, would be, um, more amenable to the citizens of McLennan Chisholm, because overall, what we do present has to be presented to them, and they're gonna vote on it.
So, and the idea, the, the reason why I brought up two, is I thought with the process of city council, we're going to address that. And so, what I don't want is to read... And so what I don't want is to read as we go into the sections. I want that section to match. So that's kind of why I didn't want to get lost. The verbiage that you want and recommendations are going to be in this document. I think it's just where to find it, and I think why I liked the Rockwall one was that when you start the form of government, it's clear and concise, and that you know exactly where you're looking for sections. That's all. And that's why.
Okay, this is going to sound very strange coming from me, because I normally believe less is more. Rockwalls is too short for me.
Okay.
It doesn't talk about upholding the state constitution, the state statutes, the city council ordinances, so forth. So Sunnyvale, I like Sunnyvale and War, War, Warford. How do you say that? One over the top by, yeah. I like both of those because it goes into a little more detail about what laws they're upholding on both council and the city manager.
Right, right.
Beth, I get to call, I get to call her Beth. She said what I was going to say. But y'all calling Michael, he only lets me call him Mr. Holla, is a, his less is more is, is something I agree with. Same thing. I like Rockwalls, but the part about where it's talking about the council in, I think Heath's, or there was another one, I think, in Sunny, or Sunny, no, Roy City, talking about the council and how it's made up and everything. We don't need to duplicate. So I think keeping it simple, but adding a little bit more about talking about the constitution things is, is where I'm at.
I'd like to look at my section and separate from the city council.
You don't need to, yeah, we don't need to.
Really, the number of places.
So, okay.
So hearing everything from the example, Roy Cities would be what I'm hearing, really, from what the intent of what that was bringing up. Well, so, well, the constitution wasn't mentioned in Sunnyvale, so what? Alright. Uh, I just got a flip, I, I, I mean, I'm never tired of hearing your voice. But, um, would go ahead and let us all go to Sunnyvale, page one, section 101. And we'll take a second to review. And so hearing everyone in the concerns, I think that with the exception of changing the word to city council and city verbiage, that we are all basically on page for Sunnyvale's. But I want you to make sure that we're, that's where we're going. Now, again, I want to reaffirm, uh, but can you go ahead? Tony, can you, I want to make sure I'm recording my voice. Like to hear it. So with that, the idea is that we would accept the, just as a template language. Again, we are, we, we have anytime the ability to review and rewrite. But Sunnyvale's is what I'm hearing today will be the proper language moving forward at this time with the modification of city council, city manager. Hearing none, at this point, I'm going ahead and move and say that we have agreed on our first big topic. So congratulations. Alright, section two, our next one that we're going to discuss, annexation and de-annexation language. We did accept Wolfworth's original language of the annexation and, and annexation, but we did want to review it. And so at this time, I am going to go ahead and start back on Leslie. Uh, we are at eight, seven fifty-three, and so Leslie, I am going to start with you. Any concerns?
So I'm going to claim ignorance because I was not at the last meeting and did not know until we got the agenda yesterday or the day before what topics we were covering, so I had not focused on this. So one suggestion I might make for those that aren't here tonight, and because I'm going to leave before we get to this, is maybe, short of waiting for the minutes, maybe we send out a quick email saying, in two weeks, we're going to talk about these topics. Because then I'd have the two weeks to.
I apologize, that's all.
No, it's, no, I, I mean, I was, I could have, I could have watched the meeting, but it was not sure, so I didn't.
Alright.
We'll do that.
That's fair. But so I, I did not, I did not prepare.
But the language, the language we have, it is in this document here, the City of McLennan Chisholm Charter, I think everyone's got here, it would be this one here. You'll notice that language that we currently have is located under section. The language in red is not, language in black is basically what we've agreed on. And that will be, section one dot zero three, the boundaries of the city, A and B. And actually, you can use section 102 as well. Now, I understand this. And I understand this is a section 102, boundaries and limits, and 103, extension and reduction of boundaries. Alright, and I'm going to go and pass it down to Melody, and she did have some submission. And I want her to have that opportunity to bring her submission in.
I don't know if y'all.
Yes. I thought that was. So everyone should have gotten an annexation, disannexation template draft that Melody has submitted.
Did everyone see the paper that I gave you? So I just went through each section, and I pulled things that I thought were relevant to us and sort of put it all together, which we can, it's in bigger font, so it of course would be a lot smaller and smaller font. You can, you know, see what you like, see what you don't. It's just what I, what my vision for that would be. I looked at them all, and a lot of them had similar things. Their first sentences were consistent with all others. Some of them called it different language, annexation, disannexation, de-annexation, extensions of boundaries, contractions of boundaries, so that would be a choice. You all made a choice for naming it extension and reduction of boundaries, rather than annexation and disannexation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and that's perfectly fine.
And the reason why that is is because the law currently addresses it as a, with state law, because right now, there's no forcible annexations. You can only come in voluntarily.
Correct.
So that's current state law.
Right.
And so to best reflect current state law and the simplicity of it, I thought it would be better than not trying to put it in archaic terms when it's already been decided currently with, with state law requires. That's why, that's why it's worth it.
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine. I was just notating that there were differences in how they said it, right? So if that's a current, good use term, that, that's perfectly fine, too. And I do know that they did stop people from forcibly annexing. So that is only voluntary now. Yes, that's very true. Some of them didn't have, you know, taxes as part of their language. There was just some things that were different in each one of them. And, I mean, my statement is kind of written down here, so it's all there for you all to read and to pick apart and like or dislike what, what you want. But I kind of just tried to combine what I found best of each one, for ease of viewing.
Thanks for that work.
Yeah.
I couldn't read it in British, but.
We have it here. Like I said, we kind of already worked it out, but I want to make sure we wanted to revisit it. John, you good?
I have it.
Okay.
It's one of those things, again, that falls into the, is the less more, and are we, how far do we go down the rabbit hole? Because annexation and de-annexation can be very touchy subjects with eminent domain issues and things like that. Having dealt with some of that, our property and all that, it's kind of a strange place to be. As far as deciding where, where things should and shouldn't be able to be done. I think where we stand now, I think we do need something a little bit more extensive than, than what the template is called for, but not necessarily as extensive as these other folks have got.
Well, at this point, is there something that you want to really recommend? Or, again, I want to stress, this is a template. When it comes to review, if there is something, now, at that time, you're going to have to bring it up. Like, you are going to have to make that decision on that. Today, we're just, you, you can't bring it up next meeting, too. So you're, you're not forced, wait, I, I want to be clear. I'm not forcing you to make a decision tonight. We're trying to move this meeting so everyone knows where we're at with, where I'm thoughtful on your time. But again, what I don't want us to do is get circular logic where we're, we keep spinning the same wheel, and then we're now in January. What I'm trying to say is, we get it, but I also want you to be thoughtful, and when, when you really think it's important to Donna, I want you to Donna hell. And, and that's why, you know, it's good. But again, there's no wrong answers, and you're not forced to make a decision today.
I will say also that laws change and change back sometimes.
Yeah.
So I know that a lot of people will leave things in ordinances or charters with hope, you know, that like, they could force them together, but, or if there's something else that made me think of that. But just to keep that in mind, that you don't want to have to go back and change it, that they change it. If it's not affecting anything or causing any problems, you can leave it. Even if it's not, it could be comfortable again.
I do have a question for the attorney, and it may sound just a little weird, because when I was reading, studying it, I had a question. For the annexation and the de-annexation, could we write it so that it would have to be up to a vote? You know, like the people vote on it, can that be done? No, you don't want to do that.
Here's the thing, I, I think, you're asking me, I think it's kind of a waste of time to talk about annexation, because they have taken it away from everybody. Only way anybody can be annexed is if they are clearly sympathetic to annexation. So if any of those.
Okay, I can, I can relate. So my other question was, you know how in constitution, like each amendment, you know, there's paragraph after paragraph sometimes? But really, all of it can be summed up for each amendment is like one sentence, like freedom, like, you know what I'm saying? So I'm saying for, for like freedom of religion, as long as it is, it really, the, the most important thing in it is, you know, the sanctity of your conscience can't be violated. That, that explains the whole thing, if you would make a legal argument. Okay, so for annexation and de-annexation, when we write, is what would be like a key term to put in there? That really should be in there to protect the city. Do you see what I'm saying?
You mean in the charter?
Yeah, in the charter.
I don't think, personally, I don't think anything you put in the charter regarding annexation is going to make any difference to the city at all.
Okay.
Because the only, the only way someone can come into the city is if they hand us a piece of paper and say, please let me in the city. That's it. So it's always going to be the council's decision whether or not we're going to let somebody annex. It's first and personal decision. We can't make anybody any difference.
And I think the language that you would talk about that specifically is included in what we have done with Wolfworth. And that is that the boundaries may be enlarged in additional territory, and any man authorized by state law. That language is the key language. That's the key part. Right. If it's authorized by state law, we can't do it. And I think anything else that you want to go into that, basically, again, in the old age, it was clear that you could do different things. But I think where, where we're at, this adjusts accordingly, and that's the point of it. It's succinct. And I think that's what I would like, because if it's unauthorized by state law, you can't do it. Alright?
I, I apologize.
Thank you. And that's why I brought her forward. I wanted her to have as much say as she could, so. Tommy, get ready. You're going to go back to the other, other way.
Uh, Wolfworth?
Yes.
Wolfworth, uh, the extension and reduction of boundaries, I think that was, it was simple but clear and concise. Uh, I think if, if we wanted to just get wordy, it would be the city, Roy City. Uh, I think that when they talk about enlarging, enlarging the city, it, it's, it's almost like Roy City has a, has a good point when, about enlarging and how to do that. And then Wolf, Wolfworth has.
Yes. Dennis?
No, I, I agree. You know, going through all of this and then what you said and what, you know, Michael said as well regarding the de-annexation and annexation perspective within the legislature, one of the things that we need to do is make sure that we do keep something in here about it, simply because when we're going to be talking about changing of boundaries, I think that, you know, what Melody actually brought in, I kind of really liked that. It had a kind of a summarization from different ones. And you could tell that, you know, you did your homework, you went through them, you read them, you were like, no, I like this piece. I like this piece over here. And I, I, you know, heard what you said at the beginning of all of this, Mark, was that we're going to, you know, be going through all of these, and we're going to pick certain things that we like out of them. And I think Melody did a great job on putting this together around that. You know, as much as I would like to say, oh, well, you know, we, we don't have a need to because we can't annex anymore unless people voluntarily do it. But if somebody does volunteer to come in, we have to make sure that we have the rules and regulations, you know, applicable to Texas law and constitution that says, yes, you can do this, and this is how. So, you know, I mean, I, I would go with pretty much what Melody provided here.
And I'm going to agree with Dennis, but I want to thank Melody for what she did, because this right here, to me, says it all. It also gives council a little more definite direction for the, for the annexation and de-annexation or contraction or extension, whatever we want to call it. The question I would have for the attorney, Mr. Holla, is her last paragraph says, "The city council will establish a written policy governing extension of city services to all areas." Do we have that?
So that was the thing that I actually had to scratch down.
Yeah, because I don't know that we have that policy unless we want them to write it if we leave that in here. So the only change I might make is that, that one sentence, because the next one, "Disannexation procedures shall comply with the applicable provisions of the Texas Local Government Code." It's kind of a no-brainer to leave it in there, but then go through and change the language from annexation and disannexation to extension and. language from annexation and disannexation to extension and contracting.
I don't even know what services we provide.
Oh, higher?
Well, yes, and that's, we're gonna have to part of the E S D, so we're, yeah.
But it's, we still provide it.
That wouldn't be, that, that section of your job wouldn't apply to that E S D, because that's its own regulation, its own thing.
Okay, it could say, it could, what about future services they may offer?
Oh, water?
I was thinking more like, probably same thing.
Oh, okay, just checking, just checking. Do we have a form of E S D? Emergency services, in case anybody asks. We had twenty-three, twenty-four, what?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. See, in the, by, uh, history, twenty-two.
Um, the, I like what she wrote, I like what she put together. Um, the only thing that I can't find in hers that is in this one that I like, and I can tell you why, um, the, being a visual person, um, being able to see a map, uh, and a historical record of what was annexed and de-annexed, I think would be very important, especially to future, uh, future councils. Uh, 'cause I tell you that, um, after being on the Water Committee, the C C N map is not correct. It shows half our neighborhood to be under H P, and we're not, we're under R C H. So I think it's very important that that be put in there, that, that, you know, the city secretary be directed at keeping a historical record of what is annexed and de-annexed.
Have to remember, is it?
No, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, yeah. So that's why I think it's very important that we have a record of it. That should, that language should be in there somewhere. And it is in the one that you have in our, in our guide, where it says, "The city secretary shall at all times keep a correct and complete description and official city map on file, including annexations and de-annexations."
So that would be addressed under the administration.
Okay.
Right?
Well, you had it in here, under, under our, you had it under boundaries and limits. I guess the last sentence, under, under one, oh, two.
One, two.
Yeah.
Oh, on the, the temporary?
Yes.
So you, so you want to add, um...
The, the last sentence in one, one point oh-two?
Section one oh-two.
Top of the page of your, of your guide.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess, so is there a correction you want to make there then?
No, 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 I want, I, I don't see that in what you put here. Yeah. So that would be, that would be the one that, to keep in there, that's just to add to what she wrote.
And the city secretary, Donald, has to keep a correct, complete description, official city map on file, including annexations and de-annexations.
Historical record, basically.
So add the word historical record?
Well, just go add that, that sentence, just that sentence as it's written.
Section one oh-two, the very last sentence, wants to be added to the, the draft.
To the draft.
All right? I will, I mean, any, any opposition?
Oh, yeah, I want to hear, that's right, I'm so sorry about that.
You pass the mic back over to me.
And we have a little, little question.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Hand delivery.
Very sweet.
Did everybody have their ones?
I didn't, really.
Oh, sorry.
I wasn't here, but.
Sorry, can you go around?
Why don't you look?
So my question is for the city attorney, are you familiar with all of these documents we're looking at here?
No.
No, okay. Do you have an opinion about, uh, are you familiar with any of them?
Oh, which ones?
The city, the city charters.
Oh, no, this is, this is the first one I've even seen.
Okay.
Our, our draft, I guess.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was one that was considered like, the prototype, or one of the best in the...
Okay, that's good, but I'm not sure that would, there's, there's really, there are prototypical provisions, or sections, or whatever you would call them, in a charter, but I don't know that I would hold one up that I've seen and I've dealt with, that's just head and shoulders above the rest.
Okay.
I will say this also, from looking at, um, I really, I don't remember who it was, I'm gonna give the, the proper credit, uh, when in doubt, to give credit, I would say, this didn't say it. I don't, I don't remember exactly who it was, but you do want to make the provisions clear. I remember there was a huge deal, ah, getting around years ago, voted the city of our left, and there are charter on, I think, a referendum and how to vote it, it's a little bit, it's been over years, and I'm also old, and I got dinged and called a ball. But I, I remember there being something in the language in the referendum and how it was working. And the, the city attorney at the time, I thought, was playing to the council too much, he didn't want it. It went out of his way to say, well, it's a particular language you gotta use, this is clear, but when you help a person, you, now, whether or not the city attorney should do that is a different deal, but you kind of see the danger there. So making it as clear as you can on things, um, not that there won't be some loophole to make arguments either way, because that's what sometimes attorneys have to do, okay? And this is very similar to an ordinance and a contract. If you look at three eleven of the, uh, of the government, of us called the construction act. And it's, it's an order that they have to follow, where they're interpreting statutes, regulations, ordinances, and things like that, laws, okay? And there are various, the single with contracts, ordinances, these rules, like, it all fits right in here. And I think that's a kind of a good guideline, you want to be familiar, uh, because sometimes in a contract, you want to be, sometimes you want to be vaguely specific, other times you want to be specifically vague. There, there's actually a difference between those two. So here, you want it to be, and I'm a fan, and people, hey, were you just, this kind of A N O S A B, because the laws don't, no, I was actually A N O S B when I was a young child, I was like, okay. And I think this is gonna be an okay to use, I remember years and years of talking to somebody, and we used the term Christian, and we were, I thought we were using interchangeable, okay? This person, he was a friend of mine, and so we had really good conversations. Um, I found out very quickly, as soon as you mentioned the word Jesus for women, they were buzzing. So the, the point there is, you can talk all day long, using the word Christian, and you think you're on the same page. You're really not. So that's, I love to define things, I've always wanted to define their things as much as I can, so to the extent that, that you're drafting certain provisions, whatever it is, I think a prototypical clause is gonna need one, or you don't necessarily, well, let's go get a legal thing. To be sure, there might be times where legalism is necessary in certain things, but I think to the extent that you can, you don't want to make it impossible for people to understand what they're reading. So that, I think that's a really good question.
Well, may I have the floor?
Absolutely.
Just for one moment. Absolutely. I, I promise to say this, this will be the last time I say this, but I just want to put my, my opinion out here, I promise I won't bring it up again. Um, if there are things that are very specific to us here in the Clintonism that are unique to us, I feel like those are the places where we really wanted to devote a lot of time. When you was talking about, as we pick our words, we're gonna be trying as carefully as we can to pick our words, but inevitably, we will make a mistake, and down the road, somebody's gonna have to undo that mistake, okay? And so that's why I tend toward finding language that has been longstanding with the surrounding cities, and has been successful for a long time, and may have even been reworked to correct those errors. And so the things that pertain to us, that are unique to us, those are the things I think we should, should be dealing with them in a unique way, the things that are just straight-up, uh, I think adopt the most longstanding, trouble-free language. You said, and this is the last thing I'll say, you said something about HEAT, that theirs was written by attorneys for attorneys? I like that, because every time you get in trouble, that's who's gonna be healing with, is attorneys, right? So that's my opinion of how, of how we, the general direction we ought to go, and I promise not to say it again.
I, I think one thing...
You can say as much as you want.
I like the one thing that you said, because, and I do a appellate, I'm fair about it, I do appellate work, too, I do a, in a trial work, but the appellate work, where you appeal something up, that's a different animal than the trial work, and it's crazy to see what you said. It's not just your, I think you find your intention, you're not just using language, or clauses, or phrases, or whatever, that have been around in tons of charters, and have been around for years. You didn't stop there, because, well, there's a lot. For years and years and years, people thought the world was flat, so just 'cause it's been around for years, doesn't unmake it right, but you didn't stop there. You said things have been corrected, and that have proven to be how you're changing. I like that, because I personally think the greatest Supreme Court Justice we've ever had is Scalia, and he said, the most influential cases for him, I thought this was fascinating, weren't the ones when somebody pointed out that they won at the tro court level, and then the appellate case where they won again, but it was exactly what you were saying. He said they lost at the tro court level, then they won at the appellate court level. They saw, hey, you know what, this, there was a bunch of written, and you're right, we need to correct that mistake, which is exactly what you're saying, hey, we have language, these different clauses, they've been here for a while, there's been problems with them, now we're correcting them and making them better. I really like what you said.
And, and that's my concern that I have with the language that we have, when you put in more language that we don't address with state law, if we put in that may alter the boundaries, and being annexed in any manner, and then we're, are we confusing our citizen, even though state law currently prohibits, are we confusing what they expect to read? And that's my concern, is, on, on the second paragraph, it says, "With or without consent of the owners of any territory." If I'm a brand-new citizen, and I'm reading that, even though state, and I don't know what state law says, now I'm feeling that, uh-oh, I can do this, but they can't. So you're confusing state law, and so that's my concern, is that you would cause someone to believe that they can do it without the consent.
Well, he actually made me think of something, I'm glad he said that, made me think of something else. But if in the future, the good guys actually get, and eight girls, primaries, and non-biaries in America, they're led by themselves, those people get in office, and they're like, oh, you know what, these aren't that bad at all. And then all of a sudden, the laws change, and maybe it's more pro-annexation than before. Even something a little subtle, like, hey, under these unique circumstances, cities can be involuntarily, that might come in, into, uh, uh, conflict with the, with the charter provision. And I only say that because that area of law is just so well settled right now, and it's just so slayer, and they're just toeing out things unless they come to it, maybe leave it open in case it changes and under way.
So, I mean, I guess if we were to do that, I guess my concern with the language is with respect to, I, I just want to make sure that there's a way to clarify that.
Well, the four words in front of it.
All right?
Provided by state law.
If you can say it more than that, they can change area with other municipalities, you know, we have done that.
Yes.
And if there are inhabitants there, they don't have a choice.
I would say no, yeah, I mean...
But that does apply.
Yes, yeah, th- those were boundary adjustment agreements. Typically, generally, normally, I, the ones that I've done, and I've done it, but I've definitely done more than handful, but I've never been in a situation where it's changed, like, a lot of citizens are in city A, and they move into city B. I, I have absolutely right, absolutely is a legitimate question, I'm just, I can only speak from my experience in handling, you know, five, ten of those for, for different cities over the years, it, it's not really been something that would affect the citizens, that's made citizens a bit affected.
Not at all.
Right. Or you go just like landowners, and they do this once, and needs that, and say, I'll give you, you know, this area over here, you know, how many things, will we get access to this, like, this river for rubber, or whatever, can we get over here, we can give this, drop a land over here, and then they just swap it like that.
I was just going to go with the terrible out.
Yes.
All right. So at this point, I, I do want to use my, my, my whole time. We are moving, but I think, any other questions on this topic?
I'd just like to say something. I, I'm not sure which, what, what exactly way we're going, but looking at, you know, what you've presented with from Wolfworth, and what she has brought, I, I find similarities, I find it very, you know, and I think the concise, and simple, and to the point that we can be, is what we need to be on this right here. Uh, with the exception, you know, I would take the Wolfworth, I mean, this is just my opinion, this is not my battle that I'm going to pick. Um, but maybe on, in section one point oh-three, add a C, and put in her paragraph about, upon completion of annexation procedures, any additional territory annexed to the city will be part of the city, and just add that to it. Because that seems to me to be the one thing that is missing from this other...
So add that as a C.
That's what I would do.
Because everything else is pretty much...
To me, is the fix. I mean, that is my suggestion.
Okay.
That is...
All right. Any discussion on that? That actually, it's including what you've said, and what your recommendations are on language.
Yeah, I remember, uh, the same, this, this, yeah.
Do you want to have that as, as a C?
C, I think it just says a C.
I think that's...
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Karen.
Karen?
Uh-huh.
Karen. Um, yeah, so these are not my words, they are all words taken from each one of these charters. So I read them all, and I saw the similarities, and incorporated the similarities and the differences of what I've got many times.
But I didn't mean, I didn't, but, I mean, what you brought to us.
Yes. But I didn't, I wanted you to know their origin, which is in all of these things that we were presented. Uh, what other cities have done, it's not what my city or city has done. I do have a, we're in a lull, um, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, so we're, maybe I'll, for Mr. Holland.
Okay, wait, wait, uh, do we need a quick break? We've been sitting for, um...
This is, this is...
All right, go ahead.
This is quick, it's just about, and I don't know if there's gonna be... A wise man told me we should look at the amendments, uh, to see what people have done wrong, and I think we touched on that just a moment ago, um, but where is a good place to find the amendments? That's, uh, you know, for me, I can see some in some of these, but it's, it's kind of hard.
I'll just Google, check the charter amendments.
Just check the charter amendments, and then all come up for...
Yeah, the city, this is, you have to have one.
So you have to go city by city, though? Okay.
Ball process, they, they theirs, right?
Ah, okay.
Point of interest.
Okay. Yeah, so, that was, um, something we can look into, is checking amendments.
And I have talked with, as we talk about law, having theirs, I am, I am trying to find out what they're looking at, so if, do you want me for the next meeting? Um, I can bring up what they're gonna be addressing, if you want to see if we can hear that, and I can bring up what they're gonna look at, if you want to see what, what it is. Basically, it's gonna be term limits, and, uh, the council, um, approach. There is, uh, some that want, those are some of the basic things on how the council moves forward, and plurality versus majority. And so they want to have more elections. So that, that's what they're looking at. But that, that is, I mean, so that's kind of what they're going on.
They're particularly much larger, that might not be, for amendments, those are often going to go wrong, right? Or, or what they should have done.
At this point, um, 'cause I, I feel like the, the recognition of the C, is that the way we want to go? Or what, how, I mean, I think that is a compromise for everyone, and I think that's a great suggestion. Um, the only other thing I would say, Mr. Hala, does it add in confusion with, that the shell bare the prada part of the taxes, is that clear and concise, or do you think that could confuse? Uh, it would be under the verbiage, I, I, I'll give him that, give him that language right there.
He's got it, Mark. Oh, he's got it, Mark, okay.
Paragraph three, prada taxes.
Sure.
Got it, Mark?
We have to, we have to, the annexation's where the T, like, so I have zero problem in that.
Okay. So with that, I'll make the changes, and we'll close it. So with that, I'll make the changes and we'll close it at C. All right? Any, what? All right, so we're going to add that language to as C. And again, um, any concerns, anything we revisit on that, I will make those. Um, do you want to accept a motion? I mean, right now we're work session. So we don't need to, we don't need to be that formal. I mean, if you want to make it really formal, we can, but if, if, if this point, you're going to get that chance to fix it later.
So what you're talking about then is taking the, uh, that is.
And making it C.
And making it C.
Yes, very simple. Any other discussion? On tha- on this topic. All right, so I'm going to give us, I know we've been going, we have been going for an hour, two hours now. We have another half hour, this next one's going to be a little meeting. Um, and if we need to move it to the next meeting, not a problem. Um, I think we've been moving quite nicely. So I'm very pleased with our results. So with that being said, um, do we need a break or do you want to try and see if we can get what we can get done on administration? Let's get it done? Anyone need a break? All right, if anyone does need a break, you take it on your own and come on back when you need to, but we're not going to hold it. So the bathroom will be over there if you don't know, so just step on out and you can come back in. We're going to be moving into administration. All right. Sir.
Anybody want some water?
I do, please.
You probably want to put a complication on the specific, for hire, if the guy that comes in as the manager, if on the application he may be misspelled and Clinton Chisholm, they're automatically.
Oh.
And probably a tax report on it too, by my opinion.
Um. Oh.
When the firm, I was aware that back in 2007, I started working, she was, oh, I was the one, she was tolerating, I used that word, it was accurate. Because I was the only one that spelled McClinton Chisholm.
Yes, because when they submitted an ordinance with a misspell, it went right after.
Oh, and the other part that she doesn't know is when I worked with a newspaper, the Rockwell County News, the editor had a problem with spelling McClinton Chism. And he, he came in one day, God rest his soul, and he goes, uh, Bev Stevens corrected me vociferously on this spelling and she said, how can I be an editor if I can't spell? True story. All right, so we are now in administration and so this is the rod of what do you want the city manager's duties to be? So this is, this is the big bad wolf. Um, again, I want to be clear, we can revisit this at any time. Whichever one you want to go to this one. So I'm going to go to Tony. And so administration, um, caveat to this, we did have basic boil template for city secretary that is pretty much consistent across the board. Any language you want to add is welcomed. Um, the other part of this is on the tax administration and I will, uh, allow that to be. There is a simple term that I think I was looking at, I think it was sunny veils. And I think that one addressed it. If anyone is on, on tax administration, under administration, which basically defers it to. Oh, and while, while you're looking, um, there has also been included Amarillo. Um, you'll see in front of you, you've, you've also been given, uh, Trophy Club and Chrome as cities to reflect on as well.
And since we have these three new ones, can we take part in the team?
Can.
Because this is, this is major, we're talking about all the cities now, this can't be.
No, I, and, and again, do you want to, I mean, so here's my question to you guys. Do you want to, um, you want to call tonight? Do you want to see, uh, some other things that we can work out in place? Um, or again, do you want to keep going through? I mean, you're, you're saying that you're not comfortable, but I mean, do we want to go longer and work? I mean, or go to a certain set of time and just start the process? No rush, I just want to, I want to make sure I'm doing the right part.
Well, I won't, we, you do the information.
Okay. All right. Okay, no, I, I want to make, so again, that's it, I mean, at this point, I want to make sure that we go through everything. Is there anything that anyone has that they want to, I guess, at this point? If we're going to do that, we're, we're moving well, it's eight thirty, so, I mean, we've spent two hours. So I don't want to get us, that we keep drawing on and we're getting sleepy and we're making that decision to you. I don't want to beat you in this mission. Is there a copy?
I think, I think as we're kind of curtailing towards the end here, I think as far as like city secretary goes, that one seems pretty cut and dry. I think getting into city manager is probably best left for another time.
Agreed.
Um, but I think with that, I think we could kind of tie up that one and then.
Leave that one to be revisited next meeting, but anything else in city administration? And the other part that I felt, I think it was, uh, the municipal court? And I, I think that that one can be solved tonight because I think it's clear cut. And I think the language can be there and we can revisit it down the road. I know it's a lot because we're all leaking through, it's like we have so many, um, I don't want to cause that.
Well, I've had, uh, going through the city managers, the city acting town manager, city secretary, treasurer, and others, city attorney, municipal courts judges, especially judge clerk, deputy clerk, administrator, tax collector, tax collection service. So there are choices in those, those things, and I think we can use the service of tax collection.
We use, we use.
Yeah, so we don't have our own.
And there was a language, I'm trying to find that language.
Cause the language ended, I think it says either or, as a, as a city council.
A question I would have before we get too much into this is, is it possible to get their current job descriptions?
To get the city manager, the city secretary, the blah, 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 current job descriptions to see what their duties are?
It's in the material.
It's in here, okay. Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you, Jerry.
That is, I'm a thing, I'm a, I saw on my, I just like.
Yeah.
I have heard of that. Governor, former governor, your city attorney, your city attorney. I think the city attorney one is pretty easy.
I think we accepted well played on that, if I remember correctly. I think we accepted well played on that.
Oh, you did, your city attorney.
I'm going to check.
Yeah, that one, it's a pretty clear cut and pretty consistent. We do call it a secretary, or treasurer, rather than a city secretary.
Yes, we, we, we did submit the city attorney language, uh, of heat. And that, and that is on, on section seven, uh, section seven.
The city administration, other one, two, five.
And we can, the mine is all as one section. I did leave it, but we can, we can adopt it differently in, in section. We can put all administration into one section if you want.
Yeah, I thought that you had to bring something about administrative.
The administration slash positions, administration, all of the administration would be the managers, the secretary, attorney.
And, and I was, and we, 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 I love it as that, as we went through it as well played. And then we come back to visit it, um.
Yeah, so it's one section and then subsection, right?
Um, it was, so on the municipal court, I think the one I was looking at, which was as simple one as Wolf's municipal court language. And that is page eight, section four oh two, sorry. I'm making, if anyone gets paper cuts, I'm sorry.
What about the Chismas in this court section?
It doesn't have, that's what we're. I don't think, I, I think it's, it's struck out.
In the page section.
Oh, you want to look at the page?
No, 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 in your, in your binder, there's a page section.
Yeah. We do.
Who is our?
Paul.
Here is your blank read, the office of initial judge, shall be provided by the court of the city and shall assume the powers of review of the district. Municipal judgments in states. Municipal judge shall be selected by the mayor and provided by the council. Municipal judge shall be some suitable person to address all the qualifications to provide running as a council. The mayor is elected, the city council approval, such associate or alternate, alternate judgments. Reside in the absence of the residing judge, which is something that will increase your cases and that's pending. In said court, as a necessary consideration, the judge on municipal court serves with a term of often two years and shall be appointed or reappointed within nine days after the expiration of his or her term of office and then there's an ordinance associated with it.
And I'm okay with that language if everyone else is, if, if, I mean, that's clear insight.
Does this still apply to us, this was the last thing, right?
Yes, it does, it does, um.
The only thing is, uh, maybe is if the mayor has been appointed as a city manager now at this point.
So that's what Wolf, and I, I, I would tell you, I think what we could, I would say that it would be by city council. And not mayor.
It seems like everyone that needs to choose on this right now, he says is selected by the mayor and affirmed by the majority council.
Yeah, so we change. Yes, I agree, so we have to tweak the language to, but we're doing it right.
So, so I'm going to say shall be select, um, uh, minute, shall be approved by the city council. Or, I mean, just is selected by the mayor, but, but shall be selected by mayor and council is what, okay?
Or selected by the majority, majority judge by mayor and council.
All right, so the mayor would, well, at this time, the mayor and count, city council would include the mayor in it, in that, which correct?
I, I always think the city council includes the mayor.
Okay, so I, I would use the city council, shall be selected by the city council and approved by the city council. All right? Provided by the majority. All right, that's such, and I will use the division five language for that court. All right, and, and I will change that on municipal judge municipal court.
Can you change something from these, since there's an ordinance associated with it? We change it on our charter, we're going to need to have ordinances changed in the let them.
So.
Cause these all have ordinances associated with.
Um, yeah, I would, I would not include the ordinances, that would be, that's going to be in our charter, so.
Do they have to match the ordinance to what the burden protected that or not?
Not, yes. Uh, that's, that's, because does the ordinance need to match? I mean, they would have to make that change, the ordinance changes whatever, not by council.
The charter is going to trump anything in order.
Yeah.
So what are you doing in the charter, you don't want to worry about it?
Um, upon review, I think. And Mr. Hall, I think on municipal court, I do think that if we did it like a section A A D, the city council shall establish and cause to be maintained in this court. The court shall have all the powers to do as prescribed state law. And then under B, um. Yeah, then, then there, and then the appointment B would be thereby created an office of municipal judge. All right, I, cause I, we want to establish the court and then the judge. And then that also, um.
There's all kinds of options, other judge, state judge or judges, associate judges, most type of clerks, there's a lot of different languages.
Yeah, and, and I think at this point, because getting into, to me, keeping it simple with clerks and everything else, if we get into that language, I think you're going to, it, it goes into another situation at that point.
The court clerk is always a city secretary clerk, the city secretary acted as a court clerk?
It depends on the city.
But that's the way we always get it, right?
Do we need to put that court clerk in this language?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure.
Do I mean, and the city secretary?
We had a good two year run when we were doing some of this court clerk, I believe, and the city secretary did stuff that as if you will. The, uh, court clerk, yes, and a lot of cities are slow, cities are trying to do that.
Okay.
So it's the city secretary duty.
Right. So we need to change that then, we'll need to change.
Well, can we do the city secretary duty?
Yes.
It's going to be another of that one and the.
All right, now, we have that well played at this time, we need to put that in, is what I'm saying, because currently we have that well played at this decision.
But now that we have.
Correct.
We have what, we may need to look at this before we pick a role right. Cause this is their current duties right now.
Right.
And we need to make sure everything.
So I'm saying you want to review this again next meeting, is what I'm saying, okay? So, all right.
And I don't know that currently the city secretary acts as a clerk. That's what it says there.
I, I don't, I don't think that's.
Oh, and that they don't have this. Am I right, Jerry? She writes the check, she's not a clerk.
Well.
I believe we'll be looking at twenty-two oh seventy-three, which is what we're going by now, that's the duty of the city secretary. So whatever that statute says, that's what definitely, we can add, you can, the city council can, and they have a different time, but for sure at a minimum, whatever is in there will be the duty.
Right.
Okay, and then on the city attorney, what's in the city, the city to act, you have a city attorney for their play or you want, you choose this one?
So I, I think since we're, since we're doing it, I, I think what we would do on this one is wait completely on city manager, review everything. I think that's appropriate, we've already set it aside, we know we're going to tackle it. I, what I'm going to ask each of you to do is do your homework on that side, okay? And come for dinner.
So you want us to look at the city, the city manager?
Yep.
The city secretary?
Sure.
And the city attorney?
Um, I think we can do the city attorney today.
You guys are already in here too.
Yeah, I already kind of role played it. I mean, do you want to review that one? I mean, really, um, the only other one I wanted to kind of get done and maybe when we just wait and hold off and make that next, next meeting, is that tax administration. I think that's an easy one. Role play wise, but also, um, is there any other duties or anything else that we see? So, uh, city attorney, you have any questions?
I have a question, language two, the first.
What's that?
A very, uh, on, uh, Mark, if you didn't mind, can we separate these?
Yeah.
As Miss Higgins and Mr. Crawford.
Um, I don't see any other, I mean, changes. So I just want to be clear, um, I do want to be clear that what I am going to be adding in the language, transparently, is I'm going to add the first, very first section of Wolfher's piece with the municipal court. But then I'll be adding in our language with the change, city council, not mayor. That's what we're going to be doing for our municipal court, all right? I think that provides us safety. But the other reason why is getting to language, what you're seeing some of the other cities do, we don't have that staffing and I think you're going to be creating new jobs that we aren't prepared. And so I thought this was a fair way to do it and I think best recommendations of, and, and also with now going to the council, I think that's fair. We don't want a mayor, because the other thing that could be a problem there is I have seen mayors misuse their position and start to create laws and tell the judge how to do their job. And that's not justice. So I'm going to tell you, I don't want someone having so much plan and power. And that's the same thing with the city manager. I'm not going to say the city, I am not going to say the town, or I'll say it was in Texas. There was an issue at one time where an issue came about that a judge had to rule on a city manager in Texas. And they ruled for the city manager and kept their job. When it went the other way around, they got mad. So I think the more that we can be fair and concise and allow, and I think a council is better than a, than a mayor in this position. So it avoids that power grab and allows justice. And I think that's fair to that judge to, to do that. So, all right. So, next meeting. We are, I'm, what I'm going to start to do, just because I know there's no one here, but I will hold off that and go to section six, public comments. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Seeing none. Discussion for the next future meeting. We are going to discuss tax administration, city manager. Now I'm going to ask a big one. Do we begin the duties of city council, not election? I think election has to stand on its own because that's going to be meaty. Recall and all that will be most likely October, first week of October, or second week of October. Sorry, second and fourth weeks are our, our weeks.
Are we reviewing the city secretary?
City secretary. Now...
We're reviewing the city attorney?
Yes. But I think we can do one more, big one. Do we want to do, city council is the big one?
What all is involved with it? Duties, not their terms, not their...
It would be their terms. I mean, is that too big? Am I being too?
It's just the terms, places and terms, no?
And, and, and what their power is as well. And it would, it, it could include some other things like their investigations, it could include some other things. It includes their power. It would include... Yep. Um, and the other one that we could, the other one that I would include if we did it, I would ask, because I do want it included, is nepotism. And I do want that, I would like that to be at least discussed, not necessarily in, but discussed nepotism. With council.
Does that work, does that work, is it under council, please, and if there's not standalone? There is a second standalone.
I'm double checking.
Yeah, I think there's a standalone, yeah. We definitely can tackle that as a standalone.
All right. I, I will, I mean, anyone, any, anything else? What do you think?
So, on other city positions though, like, you know, cases of Steve Leonard and chief and all that, does that not get covered in the charter?
That would be, that would be a discussion of city manager duties? I think, I think in these positions, don't do that.
I would try to put in every single possible...
No.
...you think you have. Because we don't, you know, there may be some employees that other cities may need, we don't necessarily need. Could be somebody we do need, but other cities don't necessarily. So that would be, like, I think what I said, part of the, what the city administrator, city manager, city attorney.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm basically trying to keep us moving, is what I'm trying to do. So, um, and I feel like we've done a lot of good work. I mean, Bev, I mean, you've seen, I think, the concern, I told you, we're moving very well. Yeah, we, I have it listed under section fourteen, is what, we, we could address that. And that was in red. So general consisting laws and provisions. But that was something that wasn't. I mean, so if we want to talk nepotism, I just think that that, I kind of felt like that fit in line with council. Was why I brought that, I felt like they, they go hand in hand.
Well, it depends on who, who is being hired. I think the city manager should hire, I mean, because it needs to be under their duties. It's going to be, maybe several, four, single, or... Maybe it's like the standard.
I agree.
Because if the council's hiring, yes. If the manager's hiring, yes. If chief, our chief is hiring, yes.
And, and the reason why I also subsectioned it out was the, the terms of length. So like the city of Rockwall says you cannot get a job with the city for one year. After you, sir. So upon leaving. I like that.
And they have a combination of council and mayor and all of so many terms.
And I also want to avoid anyone because that, and there is another city, um, that they had where their council member not positioned, not hired by the city, and was doing that position while they were still, I mean, they, they resigned. But I really think that's not, I just don't, I don't want that to happen. And I, I think it left that blow in that council because that council was left held like, well, no, it's, they're voting right in front of it. And so it was really an awkward discussion. So I don't want us, I don't want to put our city in that position. So I think what we can do is if you think we can do that without the city council, what we can put nepotism next, next meeting? You go with that?
I think we can do the next, because I'm concerned the city council pieces, we do it, we're going to...
That's why I ask. That's why I bring it up.
We can put it on there. We're concerned everything else.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. I'm going to put it on the agenda next time for city council, but we can punt it just like what we've done today. All right? With that, I'm going to go around and as we wrap up, I want to make sure that, Tony, as we go, anything else? I want to make sure anything we need to look at. Dennis? There it is. Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'm good.
All right. Hearing none.
I did, I did want to clarify one.
Okay, very good.
We were looking at this section that exists in for nepotism, all of the articles and recall, all of the... There's a section for negligence, and they do have existing ordinances there. And our question was if they didn't change those ordinances, will we make the charter? So we're like...
Maybe they need conflict, the charter will trump it.
Should we change the ordinances to... Who was that?
I mean, they're, they're not really easy to, I mean, I think, I think all, so, well, it's kind of like, I mean...
Have one more, has to be something in the charter to trump it up?
But, but that's what I'm saying, the charter will trump the ordinances. I mean, if you even want to clean up, you can. And I think everybody in the city will go, uh, yeah, we, we've got the greatest attorney with the worst businessman in the world, but the charter's enough. But if you want to pay a city attorney to do stuff he don't need to do? Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question, but the charter, if there's a conflict, the charter will control it, doesn't have what...
So I guess we need to have some sort of knowledge of, people will know that the charter is a particular...
And we can do that through meetings or, you know, like, public hearings or, or county hall meetings or, you know, whatever we're going to do about that, if that can get out. This is going to be, this, think of the charter, and I don't know if it's going to explain it to you like this or not, this way, how to think of it. Think of it, our charter as the constitution for the city. Just like Texas or the Ebus Constitution. So nothing is, nothing is more important than to trump it, nothing is higher, nothing is stronger than our charter.
And, and this is with the people. So this is the best thing, if you, if you, you have concerns about big government, this is small government and this is people for the people, by the people. And that's why this is the greatest thing I think that we could do. So, all right. So with that, if there are no other questions, again, you have our emails and forwarded to Jerry and it leaves on any questions that you might have. We are here, I am thankful for each of you being here and taking your time today. And our next meeting will be September twenty-fifth. Um, we will be same bat time, same bat channel. Is there anything other topics that anyone wants? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a Troy and I have a second. What, what you got?
Twenty-fifth is the September.
Well, I guess I'm not going. As much as I said I wanted to go, I guess, I guess I'm not going, huh?
Can you do a day before, a day after?
I mean, that's important for you, Mark.
I mean, the...
Does, does a particular date, does it have to be a particular day?
I, I think, I think we've been trying to keep it consistent. And the reason why I've been trying to get, here's why I want to keep it consistent. The public, even though they have not shown up yet, if you know that when it's supposed to be, they will show up. And they might not have shown today, but consistency matters. And so for me, it's about the interests of our citizens. So that's why I, I do that.
Day before the city council.
So... Well, I mean...
I know twenty-sixth is open because it was one option for another meeting.
Um, I'll review. I, I, I'm of a point of, I, here, and this is my viewpoint. I love doing extra things, but I committed to this job and I feel like this is the priority. And, um, in everything that I do, I will tell you that my consistency is if I accept it, I should have done better. And these duties matter. And so to me, my stance is let's keep it as is. I knew what I signed up for. And I'll, I'll send a Christmas card or whatever to make up for it. But I think other people in there visiting, they, they would understand what we have to do here. And I think those people would respect it. So with that, I have a, a motion by Troy and a second by Bev to adjourn. All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed will have to stay outside.
We have to put the tables and chairs back.